The full board meeting at this point?
Yes, we can go ahead and start.
I'm good.
Okay. I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. Chris, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Keagle.
Here.
Vice Chair Pinucci.
Here.
Trustee Abbott.
Here.
Trustee Toll.
Present.
Trustee Cecicass.
Here.
Trustee Otto.
Here.
Trustee Stanfield. Trustee Stanfield, I believe she is still with us. Trustee Hagan.
Here.
Trustee Tice. Trustee Shapiro.
Here.
Chair Keagle, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Florida law requires that during our board meetings, the public be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard on a proposition before the Board of Trustees votes on a matter. David, were there any public requests to speak?
Yes, Chair Keagle, there was one public request to speak, and because this is relatively rare for Florida Poly, I want to give a very brief refresher on public comments that we do during the Board of Trustees meeting. So a public commenter is allowed up to three minutes to present information. That will be timed, and if the public comment goes three minutes, you'll hear the an announcement of time's up, and then we'll move on in the agenda. A speaker with a public comment should confine his or her remarks to the agenda item being addressed. We're going to, we give some leeway on that, but in, in the event that it goes far beyond what the agenda is for this board today, we could pull the public comment early and move on with the agenda. The public speaker today is Mike Sanderson. He's going to be directing his comments to our accountability plan. Mr. Sanders, Sanderson, welcome. I see you here. You've got control of your microphone, so feel free to begin at your leisure.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair Keagle, members of the Board Administration. My name is Mike Sanderson. Some of you know me from the Board of Governors meetings where I have expressed my admiration for the accountability plans in the context of New College. However, I also want to mention my connection to Central Florida engineering, as I recently learned according to the Orlando Sentinel that in the late 1950s Lockheed Martin first came to Florida, my grandfather Herbert Sanderson was the first person from Florida that then Martin Marietta hired, being in 1939, the first person from Orange County Public Schools to go to MIT. And I myself have been a computer programmer for 12 years, and I'm a security researcher, and I love being in a field where I get to work with attack trees. Anyway, I did ask to speak regarding the accountability plan to get to it. You're lowering the goals for graduation that will happen in a few weeks. You're lowering the goals for retention that will happen in a few months, and you're lowering post-graduation goals for students who graduated last year. So really, what, what is this? And if you look at the agenda item in your packet, there's that yes, no column, goal met. And that's not really saying was the goal met. I pulled the accountability plans from last year, and you lowered the immediate goals last year as well. So really, what this question is asking is 12 months ago, was the goal sufficiently lowered weeks before it came in to get it under what we expected it to come in at? And in the case of one and four, no. In the case of 9A, Florida College System Graduation, yes, it had been 30. You lowered it to 24. It came at 25. Not so much that you met the goal as the goal met you. And graduation rate had been 41%. You set it to 37%. You got 36.8, so close. And you did the same thing the year before in 2023. So three years in a row, you've lowered these goals weeks or months before the data comes in. And you're lowering some short term, and you're raising some long term. So you can say, see, we're lowering and raising, just like you said. And you know, I wasn't at the BOG last June. Is this coming, is this really coming from the BOG? Because it seems kind of irresponsible. Is this like Governor Levine talking tough? Regardless, this board will be back in 12 months to lower these immediate goals again for the fourth year in a row. I guarantee it. And is this science? And it is science, which is now hypothesis preregistration is obligatory. But my theory is there's not actually electoral support for Florida STEM school that sets high long-term goals and then lowers them weeks before the data comes in for like four years in a row. Anyway, one final point, I did hear at the BOG in Tallahassee, you're talking about joining the NIA. So you'd be talking to David Hoag at Warner University. Warner has a significant agricultural program, not attract, attack trees, but food to eat. And I think that should, should get state support. So tell NIA former Chair-elect David Hoag that I said hello, and I'll see some of you in June in Broward at the BOG meeting. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. And Chair Keagle, that wraps up our public comments for the day, so feel free to continue.
Okay, thank you very much, David, and thank you, Mr. Sanderson. Moving on to recognition of service.
Can I ask for, before we go on, like, should that, does anyone want to, does Brad want to comment on that, or are we just going to leave that comment? Just a question, just, you know, are we dropping that issue, or are we going to discuss it?
It's completely up to the chair, but we're going to have, we're going to be actually addressing the accountability plan as part of the agenda. So I think if, if you have something that you want to address regarding the accountability plan, that would be an appropriate time to do it. So public, public comment, not a public debate, so you'll have an opportunity to comment on that as we move through the agenda, and I think pretty quick since the agenda is pretty short today.
Thank you, Trustee Abbott. So the terms of our faculty trustee, Dr. Brad Toll, and our student trustee, Taki Cecicass, are ending. In recognition of their service to the University Board of Trustees, I've asked Kristen to read into the minutes a resolution of appreciation, which will be followed by a request for approval by this board. Chris, please proceed.
The Board of Trustees Resolution 2025-001. In recognition and profound appreciation of distinguished service for trustee Brad A. Toll Jr., the Florida Polytechnic University Board of Trustees hereby adopts the following resolution. Whereas trustee Brad Toll has served on the Florida Polytechnic University Board of Trustees from May 6, 2024, through May 5, 2025. And whereas trustee Toll served on the Academic and Student Affairs Committee and the Finance and Facilities Committee. And whereas trustee Toll served as a Chair of the Faculty Representative Council from May 2024 through May 2025. And whereas trustee Toll currently serves as an Associate Professor of Computer Science. Now therefore be it resolved that the Florida Polytechnic University Board of Trustees at its regular meeting on this 24th day of April in the year 2025 does hereby recognize and commend trustee Brad Toll for his contributions to Florida Polytechnic University. And be further resolved that this resolution is included in the minutes of the meeting and a copy presented to trustee Toll as a token of the board's appreciation and sincere thanks. And resolution adopted, well, I'll let you take on, take it from there.
Thank you, Chris. Dr. Toll, would you like to say a few words? We'll give you the floor, the floor for a couple of minutes here.
Yes, I just want to say thank you. It's been, it's been a really productive year. It's been a great year. I've learned a lot. I feel like this last week has been really busy, but very celebratory. We had a game expo. We had a really successful research day. I hope some of you guys were able to make it to the research day. It was just awe-inspiring to see how the students had really kind of embraced the research elements of it. We had senior design on Wednesday, and so it just seems like the faculty has this, this momentum, this trajectory. We, I also found out earlier today that we're, Dr. Thiessen stuck with us, so he got full provost. So I know the faculty were thrilled to hear that. So I feel like we've we're in a kind of a night and day different spot when, from when I started, and I really appreciate it, and I appreciate your guys' advice and just kind of assistance. So once again, oh, and I want to tell you something, Dr. Edward Ramirez will be taking my place. He has been, he's been with us, AGNI, the whole time. He's assisted with all the FRC initiatives and activities. And he has my full support, and I know he'll do a great job. So thank you, Board of Trustees. Thank you, Chair Keagle. It's been an honor.
Well, Dr. Toll, I would just say it has been an honor serving alongside you on the Board of Trustees. You really represented the faculty very, very well. You've been thoughtful, you've been deliberate. Not necessarily in 100% in agreement, and that's the way it's supposed to be. And we just appreciate your, your candor on our board and certainly the remarks that you just made about the trajectory of this university. It really means a lot, I'm sure, to the entire university committee, community, your commitment. And I will just say that I had been following the inaugural research day, as Dr. Stevenson knows, and I found at least what I could see from the social media posts and the interactions quite extraordinary. And we will certainly welcome Dr. Ramirez onto our board, and thank you for your comments and support of his trusteeship. So we appreciate that. So with this, I'll accept a motion to approve Board Resolution 2025-001, recognizing Dr. Toll's service as a trustee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so who, who made the motion? Trustee Abbott?
Pinucci.
Okay, and second by trustee Taki, any further discussion? Okay, being none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, trustee Toll.
Thank you.
Okay. Chris, will you now read into the minutes a resolution of appreciation for trustee Taki, which will be followed by a request for approval by the board?
Yes, Board of Trustees Resolution 2025-002. In recognition and profound appreciation of distinguished service for trustee Christos Taki Cecicass. The Florida Polytechnic University Board of Trustees hereby adopts the following resolution. Whereas trustee Christos Cecicass has served a one-year term on the Florida Polytechnic University Board of Trustees from April 28, 2024, through April 27, 2025. And whereas trustee Cecicass served on the Board of Trustees Academic and Student Affairs Committee and the Finance and Facilities Committee. And whereas trustee Cecicass served one term as the student body president. And whereas trustee Cecicass received from Florida Polytechnic University, or he will receive it on May 4th, a Bachelor of Science degree in mechanical engineering with a concentration in aerospace. Now therefore be it resolved that the Florida Polytechnic University Board of Trustees at its regular board meeting on this 24th day of April in the year 2025 does hereby recognize and commend trustee Cecicass for his contributions to Florida Polytechnic University. And be further resolved that this resolution is included in the minutes of the meeting and a copy presenting, presented to trustee Cecicass as a token of the board's appreciation and sincere thanks.
Trustee Taki, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, I'll keep it brief because we have some other items to attend to, but thank you all so much for this recognition. It truly means a lot to be acknowledged to by a group of people that I really look up to as leaders, and I hold to such a high regard. One of the things that I've always admired about the board is how genuinely you listen to the student perspective and the student voices. You consistently made space for our perspectives as we are, we're not, you're not here just to check the box off of are, are the students happy in check mark? No, you're here to actually shape the decisions that we're making. That kind of respect, the sense of being treated not just as a student, but as an equal, it's pretty powerful. I felt that every time that I was given the opportunity to speak or contribute, that I was given that power of, as an equal as well. It's this honor, I guess, it's not just a personal one, but it's a reminder of why we are all here. The students are the heart of this institution, and I would like to remind you guys that that is the reason we are all here right now is because of the students. We're not just part of the mission, we are the mission, and everything we build, shape, and grow together should come back to that truth. And now, before I start sounding too sentimental, I'll just say this, don't get too used to saying goodbye to me because something tells me this won't be the last time you see me here. And you know I have a habit of showing up when you least expect it. So I want to thank you all again, and I hope to see you all in the future.
Thank you, trustee Taki, and we look forward to that possibility of you continuing to be present in our world here at Florida Poly. I just want to say you've been an outstanding representative of the student body, just as you have stated about how you've enjoyed engaging with the trustees. We have enjoyed your thoughtfulness and really being a, a true and faithful committed leader of the student body as president and, and as trustee. I would say your engagement has been invaluable. And to see you and our other students on Florida Poly Day at the Capitol, just your passion for this university, your caring for the future trajectory for our students is really remarkable, and we appreciate you so much. We will miss you on the board for sure, but please do stick around. We are happy to engage with you anytime. So with this, I'll accept a motion to approve Board Resolution 2025-002, recognizing Christos Taki Cecicass his service as a trustee. Is there a motion?
Abbott moves.
Okay.
Two seconds.
Okay, moved by trustee Abbott, second by trustee Toll. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Taki, I don't know if you're going to be here in line of what you said, that you'll, you'll, you know, stick around or whatever during our next board meeting in June, because I know I'll need a pickleball partner then. But more broadly, I hope you instruct your successor that part of the role ex officio of being the student trustee is indeed to be my pickleball partner. So hope, hope, whoever your successor is, is ready for that.
The trustee Shapiro, wasn't that your first time playing pickleball?
That was, yeah.
So no excuses for our next student trustee. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, trustee Taki, and congratulations, and we look forward to seeing you at commencement, too, by the way, you and your brother. Okay, now we're moving on to the next part of our agenda, Compass Group USA Inc., Chartwell's Food Services. Alan, will you please continue our meeting by presenting Amendment Number Eight to the Compass Group USA contracts?
Thank you, Chair Keagle. Good afternoon, trustees. I'm wrestling with a bit of a cold, so I apologize upfront if my voice cracks during this discussion, but bear with me. So as mentioned, this is our Compass Group USA Chartwell's Food Service Contract Amendment Number Eight. A food service agreement with Chartwell's was actually made effective originally in 2017, and we've amended the agreement several times since. This is our eighth amendment of that. The latest amendment is necessary to address increases in labor and food that we have in our meal pan prices for the upcoming academic year. So pursuant to the agreement, we're allowed a 3%, or actually it's mandatory, a 3% increase to those rates. Anything over the 3% has to come to the board, so I'm bringing this to the board for approval. We have an increase recommended at 3.69%, so 0.69% more than the mandatory increase in the service contract itself. That's supported fairly well by our indexes and costs for food and for labor in this market. So using the Bureau of Labor and Statistics Consumer Price Indexes for the South, we see about a 6.1 aggregated increase in those items for our area, and we're asking for a 3.69%. Again, so we think that it's a reasonable request that they're bringing before us. There are a couple of other pieces in this amendment that I want to point out. Number one, in order to kind of keep that, that percent increase as low as we possibly could, we've also would like to agree to a waiving for the summer utilities costs and a waiver of fees that we would traditionally charge them in the amount of $17,552.34. We typically don't have a lot of students using the Chartwell services over the summer, so we don't believe that that necessarily is a massive impact to, not to our revenue nor to the service that those students would see. So we don't think that it has a tremendous impact, and again, goes toward keeping that rate as low as possible. We'd also like to have an amendment in this contract to change our block plan, which is traditionally faculty and, and staff only. A block plan of 50 and 25 meal plans, just like they sound, you pay for 50 plant, 50 meals, you pay for 25 meals. Change those block plans to 60 and 30. Again, it's mainly a nominal number, but it goes in line with what our other universities are doing. And does make our commuter students eligible for purchasing those block plan items as well. So not only faculty and staff in this case, but we'd like to make those available to commuter students. I do have Dr. Kerry Demery, our Director of Auxiliary Enterprises, with us as well, so we can answer any questions that you may have on this request.
Questions for Alan. Okay, thank you, Dr. Botor. Do I have a motion to recommend to the Board of Trustees approval of Amendment Number Eight to the Compass Group USA Inc. Chartwell's Food Services Contract?
So moved, Otto.
Okay, moved by trustee Otto. Do we have a second?
Second, Cecicass.
Okay, second by trustee Taki. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Botor.
Thank you, trustees.
All right, now moving on to the University Accountability Plan for Fiscal Year 25. Just prior to this meeting, the Academic and Student Affairs Committee heard a presentation, excuse me, on the Florida Polytechnic University Accountability Plan for Fiscal Year 2025. Having approved the plan, this item now comes before the full board for approval. As it comes to us with unanimous approval from the Academic and Student Affairs Committee, therefore requiring no second, we can move on to vote, and I can ask for all in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda as presented to signify by saying aye. So trustee Abbott, I just want to respect your question.
Yes. I'm wondering if Provost Tyson could comment on, I guess we heard a sort of a suggestion that for some of the metrics, including graduation rate and things like that, they're getting lowered at the last minute so that we can after the fact claim that we hit the metrics. So I'm just wondering if you could comment on whether that's accurate? And if it is accurate, whether it's standard practice or anything else?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So accountability plan, the, the two words are the dual purpose the document serves. So there's a, a part of the plan that is focused entirely on accountability. And how that is withheld is through the PBF funding system, right? Your performance on the metrics according to Board of Governors' goals. And also at the Board of Governors' meeting where they approve accountability plans, as Florida Poly saw last year. Right? So they will call us out if they see us lowering goals. They'll have a slide that shows the number of schools lowering goals. A slide showing the number of schools that met each goal. So there is that accountability plea, piece. There's also the planning piece, and so the goals we set inform the SUS strategic plan. And so for, for a statistician language, we're updating our priors. Our goals that we set for the next five years, as data comes in, we realize, for example, retention rate impacts your four-year graduation rate. So if you have an incoming class and you then get data that the retention rate is higher or lower than expected, then you should update your goal for the four-year graduation rate for that class based on that information. So is it standard practice? Yes. Goals become projections as they get more short term. And so we do update so that the SUS can strategically plan what they should expect at the system level. So it doesn't always mean adjusting goals lower, right? And so we do, we have a page there, the Board of Governors, again, that they're on top of their game with these accountability plans. We have to justify and call out when we lower our goals in the short term. Why we're doing it here and why we feel like we're justified and right in doing so is basically two reasons. One is there's a new administration, new leader for this campus, and so this is baseline data. In fact, it's not only baseline data, point two is the data in this accountability plan, the most recent data in this plan comes from September of 2024. The data go all the way back to the entering class of 2018 for a six-year graduation rate. So when a new president comes in, new provost, you know, IR takes a fresh look at the data. We really are treating this as baseline for Florida Poly and its new strategic plan moving forward. So I said, we, we did what the Board of Governors suggested. It was Chair Lamb who, who told the president, align your accountability plan completely with your strategic plan, align the goals for the president with that plan. So what you will see, let's jump ahead a year. By expectation and how we've sold this internally, how we're doing these accountability plans is that strategic plan goal for 2030 does not change. We want 3,000 students, we want 90% retention, we want a 65% graduation rate. What will change though is the one year out. If we see data coming in that suggests we are underestimating performance or we're overestimating, we will update that projection so that the Board of Governors is aware that this is where the school is headed. So yeah, accountability, planning, both play a part in this. Goals are raised and lowered one year out. We do not want to be in a practice. The public commenter is right to call us out. If we are continuously lowering our goal year after year, something is wrong. But we have a roadmap now for the next five years that we will be able, and this board will be able to judge the, the president, judge my performance, judge the university's performance on, and we will not change those goals further out.
Thank you, Dr. Thiessen. Are there any more questions around that? Okay. So as I stated earlier, as the University Accountability Plan for Fiscal Year 25 comes to us with unanimous approval from the Academic and Student Affairs Committee, therefore requiring no second, well, all in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda as presented? Is it still a consent agenda? We just discussed it. I just want to ask David.
I don't see this as a consent agenda item. This is a full board agenda item that is not in consent, has been fully formed, fully discussed, public commented on. So I think this is a full board agenda item, not a, not as part of a, a consent agenda. There's no part of this board agenda right now that is consent agenda.
Okay, so point of order, should I be asking for a motion and a second in that case?
If it comes through committee, you don't have to ask for a second.
Okay.
And since this came through committee, you, you do not ask, need to ask for a second, but you need to ask for the full vote on this particular motion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're following the appropriate rules. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, so well, all in favor of approving the, the Florida Polytechnic University 2025 Accountability Plan, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, motion carries. And as you know, this was the, the biggest part of our meeting today, and I appreciate the trustees and also those from, from the committee for spending this time. It's time for my closing remarks. I'm going to make this very, very brief. Dr. Thiessen, you stole a little bit of my thunder because I was going to mention the, the Board of Governors' meeting that was held on March 26, where Dr. Stevenson and I had an opportunity to present the strategic plan to the Board of Governors. I just wanted to share with the trustees the feedback that we got in the public meeting on our strategic plan. It was very, very positive and very welcomed by the Board of Governors. Some of the comments made is, was that this was a model for other universities. The manner in which we went about it, the inclusive nature of our Florida Poly community and others who are vested stakeholders in the outcomes that are generated by our university, which translates into ownership. I appreciate and mentioned the trustees' engagement in the strategic plan as well. So we have full ownership and we're in lockstep, which really builds on what Dr. Thiessen said in terms of our trajectory forward and the commitment and being in alignment with the strategic plan. As he said, Chair Lamb was very pointed in his, in his comments about moving into the future that our accountability plan should be in full alignment with the strategic plan. And the president's goals and the president's annual reviews should be in alignment with the goals put forward in the strategic plan. We were also able to share for those that were interested, the more detailed metrics that were put together in support of this strategic plan. And the Board of Governors found it very impressive, and, and they were very supportive. But now, of course, this is where the rubber meets the road. Now we have to deliver on that plan. So as we've talked about before, when we're in our board meetings, we will be we will be talking about progress in certain areas, we'll be reporting on progress to the strategic plan. And it will be a, it will be consistently before us. It is not going to be something that's going to be put on the shelf. It's going to be something that's a living, breathing part of everything that we do. I want to thank Dr. Stevenson also and the Strategy Circle for being very supportive of that. And I know that in your Strategy Circle, you're constantly reviewing our performance to that plan and things that you need to be doing to achieve it. So lastly, I want to mention that just before the start of our meetings today, I sent an email out, well, Chris sent it out on my behalf, that has a link to the landing page on the Florida Poly website that has the strategic plan. It has a crosswalk to the SUS metrics. We thought it was very important to point out that we keep those overarching goals of our state university system in mind and how we contribute to those. But you're also going to see a video. We did something very unique. We thought it was important to bring the strategic plan to life. And we did that. And I really want to thank Brian for his leadership as well as our marketing team and helping to pull that together. But looking forward to your feedback when you watch that video. It not only gives you the sense of the strategic plan and our trajectory going forward, but it brings in other stakeholders that engaged in the strategic planning process. It gives you a sense of the student life on campus. There are other things that are brought forward in the strategic plan, including our national and regional performance rankings. So it's a, it's a really good representation that we should be very proud of and sharing far and wide, I would say. But it also holds us accountable when we do that to achieving those goals. So I look forward to you being able to review this and insert your, your feedback in the coming days, months and throughout the year. So that being said, that's really all I wanted to say in my remarks today. And with there being no further business, the meeting of the Board of Trustees stands adjourned. And I look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.